Okay, so yeah, again, my name is Nelson Nelson. I'm an urban planner with a firm called Community Scale. I've been working in this field for about 15 years. A lot of that time is spent at StanTech. And last year, me and two colleagues split out, created our own firm. And we're on a list of vendors with MHP, that's Housing Partnership, which is giving away technical assistance grants to communities like Sherborn to better understand and plan for MBTA communities. So thus far, we've worked with Dedham, Lowell, Molden, Duxbury, Saugus, North Attleboro, and Wakefield. So applying these, this legislation in a lot of different communities in a lot of different contexts across the Commonwealth. Molden was one of the rest of the community. So we worked with them and they already adopted last year in 2023. You don't have to adopt until 2025. So again, who knows for getting ahead of the curve? So what we're going to do is walk through a little bit of background about MBTA communities. And then the purpose of tonight's workshop is to talk about site selection. So once we've set the groundwork, we can think about where the best place might be in Sherborn for a district that's compliant. And then we'll do a bit of a discussion around that. And then hopefully also get some show of hands about what we think might be the best candidates. So if we get to the next slide. If I turn over here, can you also see everyone's on that? Okay, yeah, that's the overview. Excellent. Next slide. If you hit the three dots, we can go full screen. We went back to slide. Upper right. This is forward.
Go forward, I can't go back.
I'll try using the airplane.
The three dots in the upper right?
I see the three dots. Three dots don't help. So click on those three dots.
Yeah. And down here by Zoom, there's a, there's this thing. There you go.
Thank you.
Now we can see them better. Okay. One is MBTA communities. So this is something that was adopted at the state level and is to combat the high level, a high level of housing costs in the Commonwealth, which is making our state not as competitively advantageous because we can't house employees here. Sherborn is an adjacent, an adjacent small town is what they call you. So because you're close to Framingham and Nada stations, you are included in this legislation and have the requirement. There was also some statistics done that showed that people do, from Sherborn, do in fact use the commuter rail by counting license plates. So because of that, you are included. So what happens if you do not comply with the legislation? The first thing that we know for sure is that you will be disadvantaged for discretionary funds from programs like MassWorks, which does things like help pay for road maintenance. But the Attorney General has been clear that you can't simply forego your MassWorks grants and then be satisfied. So you will still have additional penalties if you don't comply. What those penalties are exactly, it has not been determined. So what I expect, what I've been told will happen is that if you are not compliant, then there will be builder's remedy, which is similar to if you do not have Safe Harbor 40B or basically your zoning is not compliant with state law. And therefore, if the developer wants to come in, build multifamily whenever they want, they can bring you to court and say basically you don't have compliant zoning. So for those two reasons, it's a very good idea to be compliant. And we think that there's some ways that that can be done in Sherborn, which are compatible with your three units. So again, you're an adjacent small town. The capacity that you are required to zone for is based upon your size. So the state has allotted a capacity of 78 units. One of the questions we get is, will this change in the future based upon a new total number of population or housing units? And right now, the state has no plans to increase that number in the future. So this is what it is for now. There are some other requirements that also help frame how you become compliant. One of them is that you need a district, which is at least five acres in size. Because Sherborn doesn't have a station, you can put that district anywhere you want in the community. Otherwise, if you had a station, some percentage of that district would have to be within the station area.
Seven eight units and five acres, choose seven.
Yes.
So they am.
The other requirement is that there's, you have to have at least a density of 15 units per acre. All that five acres. And 15 times five is 75, so you're pretty close. If you choose a five acre district. You can also go above 15 units per acre to achieve the 78. That's what's considered a multifamily density.
I have a question. What about water and sewer since most of the families in this town are on private wells and private sewer? Did the Commonwealth of Massachusetts take that into account in allocating that many units on an acre of land? That's a problem.
So the infrastructure capacity was not considered in terms of how, how the state has allocated housing. So the town can rezone or multifamily capacity with the expectation that, that infrastructure will be brought forward in the future. So it doesn't need to be a parcel that has water and sewer.
Oh yeah, you say minimum land acres. Minimum land area, sorry, is five acres. Is that the total minimum land, say, that Sherborn would have to use for? Is it five acre minimum per parcel is more than one parcel?
Total, it's the total area.
Excuse me, if you could just repeat the question so that our audience that's in Zoom land could hear the question and then if we could answer it, we'd be able to help with the question.
Thank you, Frank. Yeah, so the last question was, is the five acres per parcel or total? The answer is total. And sorry, I already answered your previous question. If there has to be infrastructure in place currently and the answer is no, that can be brought forward in the future. This is, again, and this also isn't a mandate to produce housing. The thing that the state cares about is capacity. The fact that you have capacity for multifamily in zoning. So again, not considering infrastructure, not considering a lot of things. It's just, is there capacity for at least 78 units multifamily somewhere? It can be anywhere.
Another question comes in. Does the minimum land area need to be contiguous?
Yes. Yeah. So the question was, does the minimum land area need to be contiguous? And the answer is that at least half of it needs to be contiguous. But I don't think that in Sherborn, we're going to have multiple districts. But at least half of it has to be contiguous if you do.
I believe if questions are from up front, I think the microphone can pick up the problem and is right now that microphone, you guys are speaking with it to your back. So I think anyone in the, in the center of her attending that's not at the table, they're speaking away from the microphone. So that's why I want you to repeat the question.
Frank, I saw one more hand.
Yeah. It is a further question and I don't want to delay it too long with the, with the water sewer. So with the, so if they do build something with a septic, you know, with wells and septic and stuff like that, I mean, they can do that. They can, they don't have to meet that density. They can build a lower density under these rules, but still be multifamily and still use wells and septic, right? They don't have to like meet that density, I'm trying to say. That density is an upper limit.
Exactly. So the question was.
That follow.
Yep. That does, is a 15 units per acre, 78 units, is that the minimum or the maximum? The answer is, is that you have to have the capacity for that. If someone could come in and build a smaller scale project on that parcel.
So if they do that, do our home rule septic regulations still apply? So like with 40B, they don't have to meet our more stringent septic regulations. They have to just simply meet Title V state regulations. Since this is, since this is within our zoning, we hold them to basically the town's more stringent Title V septic regulations.
So yeah, the question was, can the applicant use a 40B style home rule? Or go through, or do they have to go through the town regs for sewer or for wastewater? And I'm going to have to get back to all that. But what I can say is that your other zoning is still applicable as long as there's capacity for 78 units. So there's some communities that we're working with, like Duxbury, that wants to use Form-based code and have very specific design standards. That's okay. You can do that as long as those standards and those requirements are not reducing the capacity below 78.
One last, one last part of my impression, I apologize. This is just my mind was distracted, but I'll try to do a couple of technical things. Five acres is the minimum land area for the 78. If we decided to use 10 acres or 15 acres in our zoning, our overlay district, we can do that. And how are we as sure as, how can we control that development is within that whole area that we made as overlay district versus just five acres or those five acres?
Yeah, that's a good question, Frank. Because a lot of the districts that we're going to look at tonight are way over five acres. You have some very large parcels in Sherborn. And we're going to talk about how you can have additional control within that. So that's a teaser.
Perfect. There's a follow-up question here. In other words, could we put 78 units on 78 acres?
Yeah. So the answer is you can, but you still need to have 15 units per acre as the minimum density allowed. So again, we're going to, I'm going to talk about that issue in a couple of slides. We'll talk about how we approach this and this kind of. Okay, so we've all set on trying to understand that we're doing 78 units, 5 acres. The next thing is where could that or should that be in this community, this town?
So I'm sorry, we just backed up one step.
Sure.
And just preface with this explanation on the station between zoning requirements versus.
Yeah. So the question was, what's the difference between a production mandate versus capacity? Sherborn will not be penalized if you don't produce 78 units. There's no way that you would produce 78 units. How would you produce housing? What you do is you have zoning. And that zoning has to have somewhere in the community where someone could produce 78 units.
So I think I'll get to the cross issue for most of us here tonight. And I'm not going to talk about Sherborn, I'm going to talk about a theoretical. The theoretical town did not want to have any multifamily. And they didn't have any water and sewer that we may in this town. Yes, the water and sewer. We don't have any. If a town just chose five acres, a town that they knew was not going to be compliant with the local health regulations. Does that meet the requirements of the state law? And we're done. And then if, if the community is in the mindset of not wanting any multifamily housing, they can zone five acres, knowing it doesn't meet the septic requirements of local portfrankly in Title V. You know, it would almost be like zoning five acres of wetlands and calling it a day. Does that meet the state's requirements? Or is there some burden on a reasonable lift of the ability to actually?
So yeah, the question is, can you zone for someplace that would never be constructed? And would that satisfy the requirement? And the answer is no. It will be reviewed by UHLC for whether it's a reasonable parcel, whether. They're not going to do a development feasibility in that instance. But if the parcel is put in a place where it couldn't be built under your current regulations, that will be flagged. So, you know, for the same reason, if Duxbury did create Form-based code and made that reduce the capacity that needs 78, and there was no capacity, then you wouldn't be compliant with this capacity for 78 units. And then there was a question also about wetlands. Can I, could a community rezone wetlands? All the gray areas on this map are not eligible because they're wetlands, water bodies, publicly owned, or excluded for some other way. So when we start talking about locations, your capacity can't be in any of the gray areas. And one of the issues that you had previously with, when you were doing, what do you call it, the kind of test version or the?
Fresh rehearsal, I guess.
Rehearsal. Is that some of those areas were in floodplains or otherwise excluded? So they got tripped back by the state.
So if I just ask that question as well for you on the slide right there. It's originally made with the population camp, you know, wetland, public land, so on. Just exactly.
So I'll follow up with a slightly more nuanced question. So under Title V, you can build approximately four bedrooms per acre of a Title V septic system. You can handle about four bedrooms per acre. So if we as a community only zone five acres, and I know that we're talking about bigger places than that, then you could only build four times five, 20 bedrooms, or 10, 10 two-bedroom units on that five acres. So is that compliant?
Yeah, so another question about whether using septic as a restriction would be compliant? And like I said, I'll have to get back to you on that. Was it with our hands? So requirements, 78 units capacity, contiguous five acres, minimum 15 units per acre. The compliance application stick into effect all of your wetlands, other regulatory constraints. There's some other things that might help you select location. The state guidance says that they want it to be close to existing services and that you're proximate to the MBTA station. Well, this is the closest MBTA station out here. That ring is the half mile radius. So that's closest one.
Framingham or Westlake?
Westlake. Okay, thank you.
I don't know. That's Westlake corner of Framingham.
Yeah.
Wesley station.
It's also.
It's actually where you're from could be.
Yeah, could be.
So there's also some town considerations in terms of the parcel that might be selected. One is that ideally the town would select a parcel that has a very high likelihood of being adopted. So that's a consideration. Another one is the availability of public water and sewer. And then also sensitivity to historic character. And so again, that was one of the issues with the rehearsal that was done in terms of trying to rezone parts of downtown of historic properties, is that that wasn't viewed positively. So we go to the next slide. Yes?
So basically, this zone is going to be on somebody's private property.
Yes.
Whether they like it or not.
It has to be. It cannot be on public lands unless you've already gone through and can demonstrate a process of disposition to sell that land for housing. So there's, we were working in Dedham and they had an MBTA parking lot. And they had, they had already gone through the RP process to sell that parking lot for housing development. They weren't able to count that because they could show a good painting that that was being put forward for housing. So if there's a parcel in Sherborn that you want to sell for housing, you could zone that as long as you put out a RP for housing on it. Okay, so like I mentioned, another question in the back.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Did we determine what's in the upper left? That's Framingham?
Yes.
And we have to be within half a mile of an MBTA?
No, you don't.
Help me understand.
You don't have to be within a half mile of the MBTA station because you're an adjacent small town. So you can put that, the five acres anywhere you want in Sherborn.
If we had a theory all in, stop in Sherborn, then we would have to follow it differently. We would be.
I got that. We don't have any MBTA service at all anywhere in Sherborn. I don't think this applies to us.
So what define as an adjacent small town by the definition that we are, in particular, attached or connected to the town that does have MBTA stop needing Framingham?
Yeah, but we're not like constituent or cohesive or each or anything like that. Like look around, this is totally different.
Ask your laws and ask your laws, it doesn't say except Sherborn.
It just seems to me it would be a totally different situation. And what I heard you say is there's no real penalties for not complying.
There are real penalties. You are going to be disadvantaged for state grants. So MassWorks, which pays for a lot of paving. And this hasn't been decided yet, but your zoning could not, has the potential to not stand up to in court when someone could build, have, build whatever they want.
That seems like a theoretical possible drawback down the road. I don't hear anything of any real teeth in it.
Isn't Milton getting sued by the state right now because they're refusing to comply?
Yes. So the question was, is Milton being sued? I believe they are going to be sued or will be sued. Happen. Yeah. Okay, so I wanted to, because it's only 78, only 78 units, and it has to be five acres, and it has to be 15 units per acre, that is essentially one site if you put it all in one parcel. So all these options today that we're going to go over are all single parcels. And so I want to talk about a couple of things regarding, regarding that. One is, is that considered spot zoning? Spot zoning is when you select an owner and you say you have different rights or privileges to develop your property versus other properties nearby. And two things on that. One is that the five acres has the scale of a neighborhood according to EOHLC. And EOHLC is already going through the process of approving single parcel districts for MBTA communities compliance. So there shouldn't be any issue with singling out a single parcel from that perspective. The second, and this is important, is that EOHLC is also indicated that if it's a single parcel, you can institute a cap on the number of units in the district. So if you have a parcel that's 20 acres, that'll be 250 units at 15 units per acre. But if it's a single parcel, you can say in this district, you can only build 78 units. So that's the way that you can zone a big parcel without having a huge impact. The other thing about that. So yes.
What constitutes a unit? Is that one bedroom or is that a whole family with four bedrooms? I have 78.
A unit is a dwelling. So if a unit could be a studio, it could be a one bedroom, it could be a two bedroom, a three bedroom. You're not, and you're not allowed through this process to have any cap on what that unit, how many bedrooms or what type of family or there's an age restriction. So but multifamily is typically smaller, smaller units.
But it does have to be appropriate for families. So a studio probably wouldn't.
It does not have to be appropriate for families, but you cannot specifically exclude families.
Developers can choose to build something in cities. But I think our only experience is 40B where there has to be a 10%, 10% of units have to be available for families. So 10% of units need to be three bedrooms. That's not spelled out in this.
No. Okay. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so what's happened so far and what are we doing next? So there was dress rehearsal that had downtown parcels that were not compliant because they were in areas that had development constraints. And there was pushback from the historic character. So today, we're looking at new concepts for MBTA locations. We're going to discuss the pros and cons. After today, we'll process all the input we get and come forward with a draft scenario. We're going to write a draft zoning overlay. That will be presented to the planning board. There'll be more questions and answers at that time. And then we'll prepare materials that can be submitted to EOHLC for compliance. And this process will conclude this calendar year, but you have until the end of next year to comply.
Sir. What does EOHLC stand for?
Sure. That's the Executive Office of Housing in Millbrook Communities. And they're the ones at the state who are administering the MBTA communities' legislation.
The question I have to do is, we talked about the requirements for what all this has to be. Can we talk about the benefits and to draw back the certain benefits to that particular region that is chosen for this overlay district? Do they have any benefits for, for adopting or being given this overlay district over their property?
Well, they'll have the benefit of the utility of housing. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's an important part of that benefit is that if somebody has a huge property and they ultimately want to have the ability to be to sell the property and whoever buys that property would like to do something more with that property, will already have the zoning deal, the multifamily zoning. So that gives that property an advantage over a property that doesn't have that. And then you have to come to the appropriate boards in town to get that zone, or to get the, the hill to get that. So it is a beneficiary.
Sir.
Can I ask, because I'm not sure I saved on your next steps makes sense. But at the end of this, isn't it required for the zoning change go before town meeting and be approved by residents?
That's correct.
Why, why isn't that there? Could I suggest?
Our work with Community Scale will be, we will have completed all of the technical assistance that the state has given us funding to. The state has given us funding to assist us with working through this and making sure that our bio. um, the state has given us funding to assist us with working through this and making sure that our bylaw is written in compliance. And we are on that timeline so that we are able to submit everything to the state, get feedback by December. Because then in order to be in compliance, we have to pass it at town meeting. And as most of us are aware in this room, that town meeting process starts in January with advisory hearings and review and, um, hearings and everyone's further public engagement on the language. But we don't want to present anything to, at the, um, for town to review until we know that it passes muster with the Attorney General's office and, um, that he, I still cannot say the ultimate.
You can say HLC.
HLC.
Uh, there's a question online, um, from one of Verizon callers and they said, could the town, the town's approved 40B, uh, local initiative program on fully be satisfied as MBTA communities on the part?
I think that's something that's coming up as we define what is acceptable and what isn't. I'm going to let Nels continue with his presentation if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, that's, that's a great, uh, T O, that's what I'm talking about, locations. I'll just mention one thing that came up in the, uh, HLC seminar I attended where we talked about the process of going through town meeting. They said that it's actually kind of two approvals you'd have to get because like any bylaw change, it goes to the Attorney General's office and they have to approve it as legal, that it doesn't discriminate, it doesn't do something that is against state requirements. But then HLC determines, so the Attorney General determines whether the zoning change is actually legal and legal for the town to do that. The HLC determines whether or not it actually qualifies for meeting the creative requirement. So you, you'd have to satisfy both of them, both of those offices independently.
Is the next slide going to be some of the criteria we're going to use to select some of the regions? Or are you going to start quoting something? What is, what is the next?
Yeah, so they, so we already looked at the criteria. Criteria were the minimums, how the town expected, for the state wants to see it. So now we're going to start looking at sites.
Can I just ask a question because, uh, when I was looking at some of the, uh, the 3A zoning wording, though we're not in a direct MBTA, we're adjacent small town. They have a little more flexibility, but there's still the, the overview says that they would like and hope that it could be, uh, as located as close as possible to a community rail as well as, um, walking distance to, um, things like grocery stores, restaurants and all of that to the, to the center of the community. And so, uh, if that's one of the criteria that was going to kind of view once in a while, then, um, looking at how close we are to, uh, one of the three, I think the closest three stations are Bramingham, West Nating and Central Nating. And then the other area would be where they have restaurants and grocery stores and all of that, which partly is our town center. But there's also the town centers or there's the, you know, communities that are on a fringe that are not necessarily insured both to the north and to the west of us.
That's correct. That's right.
I don't think that there's anywhere in Sherburne that it's even reasonable walking distance. I carry. So what do we have to do? We have to put a supermarket?
Yeah, that's, uh, guidance. Um, and, you know, it's the same, if you have the choice between two sites that would be equally, they would prefer to see it one place or the other, but that's, that's an expressed preference by the state. It's not a requirement. And also looking at your map, there, there seems to also be a disconnect between areas that are close to, to MBTA stations and areas that are close to services. Your, your services are in your, away from your.
But Robert, if you look at some of the, the other areas that are outside of Sherburne, uh, if you look at Whitney Street going up to the Shaws, uh, Whitney Street, that Shaws is a half mile and there is sidewalks. You can walk from Sherburne to a grocery store, a gas station, uh, ATM banks, etc., etc. There's a lot there. So there are places in Sherburne where you can walk to something. It may not be insured whether you walk to it, but it's still access to some of the, uh, easily.
Why don't we just put it in Framingham?
Sorry, so let's, let's look at some sites. Um, we go to the next slide.
Just real quick. So you had on there about the initial view had to do with downtown with multiple parcels, okay? So I'm assuming using the word parcel now, we're looking for one piece of property with one owner. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we're going to look at some of these options. There's only seven. After we look at the seven, it's not satisfactory. We can go back and look at others. But these are seven that we've discussed with staff, looked at your housing pipeline to understand that these might be good candidates if the community agrees. So there's a lot of data here because we spent some time looking at these. I'm going to just talk about what the different categories are that we're carrying about and we're going to look at each site individually. So on the left you have the seven sites. Some of the sites already have housing on them. That's okay. You can do that. You can get credit for the multifamily housing you've already built. It's okay. Some of them have market rate and affordable housing on them. Some of them are planned or under review. All of them are at least five acres. So again, you're picking the middle site. Some of those. It's okay. Super friendly. Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
So if you're thinking about how much of the site is eligible for housing, so taking away the floodlands, floodlands can't be counted towards, um, towards the, the total development. So if you're doing fifteen units per acre, you have to take those out. So then we have the current density on some of these sites and some of them are, you know, have higher and lower densities. When we look at, if you were to take that site and make it 3A, fifteen units per acre, what would be the capacity? How many additional units would that be allowed for? But then you do 3A with a cap, so just you say, here's our district, our district is one site. On this one site, you can build seventy-eight units. What would be the difference between how many units are there today and how many units would be allowed by right, that's the capacity? And that's the final problem. So you can see that, for example, on the fields at Sherburne, if you were to take that site, already has thirty-two units on it and say, this is now our by right multifamily district, the impact would be forty-six units if they decide to build that. Any questions on how we approach that?
Uh, yeah, you seem to be assuming, you've said, uh, that you're assuming it will be a single parcel that will comply. Uh, but why have you ruled out multiple parcels?
So we haven't ruled it out. This is an approach that uses the state's flexibility to give a cap on a single parcel. If you use multiple parcels, you can't use a cap because that's unfair. Someone builds and they're taking away someone else's right to build. Their, that's their interpretation, not mine. So by putting it on a single parcel that might already have multifamily housing on it, you're reducing the impact. By putting the district on multiple parcels, um, which was again already, um, considered in downtown, then now you have to contend with the historic nature of each of those parcels and existing buildings on them, different constraints there, and then also changing the character of that neighborhood. Um, because, um, you'd be going from what's mostly single family up to much higher densities. Uh, but we could also look at a, a different approach.
I was hoping because it's so tiny.
Sure, yeah.
And I'm sorry, my, my eyes don't. You've got the field of Sherburne, yeah, I'm going to, oh, there you go. You've got the field of Sherburne, total plan to build thirty-two. And then if you further down, if 3A with capital, with cap impact, you get to forty-six. If thirty-two are already built, how do we get to forty-six out of that?
Uh, seventy-eight minus thirty-two.
So forty-six means we still have to build forty-six more.
It's zone for.
Zone, zone for.
You don't have to build them. This is a zoning.
But is it zoned for that money?
Not now.
Right now.
But it could.
Yeah. So it would be zoned for seventy-eight.
So we could change the zone of that and make it. And, and zone for forty-six more. That's what that means. Okay.
You got it. Exactly. Thank you for clarifying that for everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
But where would you put those units? Tear, tear down the existing units to build.
There's, uh, so we, we have aerials of each of the sites that we're going to walk through next. That's the next thing I'm going to do. So yeah, so let's do that since we're, we're getting the leads. So the first, we go to the next slide. Little process? Right now there's no housing on it, but it's under review. So this would be altering a project that is currently going through your approval process. So it's just to giving them a different type of entitlement than what they have right now. They might still choose to do 40B or they might choose to go do the by right seventy-eight units. They would have that choice.
That they would have that choice and the, the, I guess the downfall of their town would be, it would be ten percent affordable rather than twenty-five.
And we would no longer comply with, with the 40B law.
I don't think you have safe harbor right now. I, I don't, uh, you, you don't, currently do not have, uh, uh, safe harbor with the 40B because you don't have ten percent of the existing communities affordable. So I think they're proposing, how many? Hundred and twenty? So if this were to go forward as a 40B, because it's twenty-five percent, you would get all hundred and twenty added to your, what's called your subsidized housing inventory. That would go a long way towards helping you achieve safe harbor. And if it was, uh, MBTA communities project, it would be, it would be different. But this is a, this is a site that's already being considered for housing.
Right, so I think actually that's where you were going. If it then was, uh, if they built it under MBTA, even though it was an apartment building, even if ten percent were affordable, we would not be allowed to count the entire development, the entire, say it was seventy-eight units. We would not be able to count those on our rolls because that's an incentive the state gives towns and developers here 40B only.
Well, if, if, if they did a 40B and they built a hundred and twenty units and you also had by right capacity for seventy-eight, then it would be.
That says that something, fourteen and a half.
Yeah, uh, sorry, what was it?
Is it maybe fourteen and a half?
Acres, yes.
Acres.
Doesn't happen to be fifty?
Five.
Five, five, sorry.
Okay, uh, another question.
Yeah, Nels, I'm sorry to sort of harp on this, but I want to follow up with, with Bob's question on, uh, the fact that most of, most properties in Sherburne are, have wetlands. And so exactly what is the process by which, uh, the state or the town determines five buildable acres? Not just five acres? Or do they require five buildable acres and, uh?
The, the, the district has to be five acres and all that district, there has to be capacity for seventy-eight units, but not all five acres have to be buildable.
Right, so, so it could be a six-story apartment building built on.
Yeah, and we'll have some more examples like that as we go through.
So the problem is on five acres. Build seventy-six for the capacity for twenty. That's, so ten units, that's not, ten is not seventy.
Well, how are they planning on doing a hundred and twenty of them?
Bringing the water in.
Yeah.
Nice Sherburne water and sewer district.
Yeah, so.
That's the way to have that.
Yeah, so again, you don't have to presume that, that infrastructure is already there when you reason.
So, so the lack of enabling infrastructure doesn't affect the calculation with the capacity?
That's correct, yeah. Thank you. Also, my understanding is that you don't have to, you don't have to have undeveloped acreage in, sorry, it can all be developed already. In fact, the state very much encourages zoning like industrial properties like warehouses that might be reconfigured as high-density housing. But I, I, I get the impression that if you, if you zone five acres that were, you know, contained one three million dollar house, that no developer would want to buy it and fold those to build more housing. They probably wouldn't like that when we're looking at it. I mean, it's not specifically disallowed, but that's fine.
Just a couple of things I want to say about this particular, uh, location that again, uh, it's just two point three miles from Sherburne Center, but it is, uh, nine tenths of a mile from the Rose Brothers, that's in Nating. And there are other, uh, banks and, uh, restaurants and other pharmacies and so on, all within about one point one, one point two miles of that location. So it still makes that location pretty good, good location. And it's also, uh, one point seven miles, uh, from the West Nating, uh, MBTA, which is the closest train station for that one. So from, from the numbers perspective, from the distance perspective, this is one to think about.
Thanks. So we have six more, then we can come back and talk about them again. But I kind of want to give an overview. Also, we have the next one.
What's the crosshatch in the country?
That's, that's the, uh, so, yeah, sorry. In terms of the symbology, the crosshatches, uh, the area that has developing constraints.
Meaning wetland or?
Yes, okay, yeah. So here's the, the field in Sherburne, which we, uh, we talked about assigning thirty-two existing units. So this is an option. As you can see, there are developing constraints out there, um, but you could rezone this to be, um, have a capacity for seventy-eight.
Where's the, the big map? The green spot there next to Washington.
Yeah.
We're going to want to build on top of the sectors.
It's not your problem.
We're just down on the big map.
Yeah.
On the le, lower level, right there.
Yeah, thank you. No, thank you, sir.
It's, again, it's not because it's zoning and saying, okay, we're allowing and who knows in twenty years, maybe there's a different trajectory, in ten years, maybe there's a different trajectory. We don't know. Right now there's not infrastructure that would support seventy-eight units constructed there, but zoning doesn't necessarily, zoning is saying, okay, this area is where we will allow this type of development even when it's to be supported by the infrastructure.
Very well said. Okay, so we have the next one.
We're going to come back and maybe analyze some of them later. Or you could give the, you could put the numbers on each of these.
Uh, for distances?
Yeah.
Sure, go for it.
Okay, so to Sherburne Center is two point four miles, but to the Hollison Center is two point one. But there are restaurants like Bertucci's and convenience stores and banks and so on, ATMs, that are closer than Hollison Center, which are about one point three miles. The biggest drawback of this one obviously is the train stations where the closest one is Framingham, that's four point seven, and the furthest one is, uh, Nating Center, five point nine miles.
She is two. Small November. How about yours?
Yeah.
All right. We have, uh, a ramp. We have, uh, a run.
Okay.
All right.
Could you blow that up edge to edge so we can see it a bit better?
Yeah, sure. Oh, what is it, Frank?
Yeah.
And where's that on the big map?
On the big map.
Lower level.
Okay.
Um, I guess nobody heard anything on Abbey Road, so it's been a request for their joining us by hybrid. I do to, um, hear your comments on Abbey Road.
Okay, yeah, Abbey Road has some, 17. System units.
18 units, six acres.
Yeah, 18 units and six acres, thank you. And, um, it's very close to community facilities by sidewalk.
Right now, in general, we're going through a couple parcels, and then we will be going back and scrutinizing potentially why they qualify or don't qualify. There might be some things that come up, but right now, these were initial, first glance, it looks like they might be potential.
Sure. Okay, um, guys, we're on this one, which is, uh, 17, currently 17, uh, units, on almost 28 acres. And the, the numbers on this one?
I don't have specific numbers on this one, but roughly speaking, uh, this one is, uh, 3.3 miles from Nady Center, three and a half, about three and a half to the, um, MBTA Nady Center. And 1.6 roughly, uh, two miles to downtown. And there is, uh, sidewalks which you get on, uh, North Main Street all the way to them.
What, there's no sidewalks, right?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about one owner. I mean, is there one owner there, or do they all have shares of this?
There's one owner. I believe this is a rental property.
No.
No, they, but they own them.
Condo ownership, so I guess that's a question that the, the community housing, you know, the condo homeowners association count as a single property owner in this situation because it's?
Yeah, I don't understand how an existing 4B could count as sufficient here because, I mean, if it was an existing home, or it was an existing store, or an existing development of homes, theoretically, you could come in, you could buy it, you could bulldoze what's there, and you could build it, you know, whatever, 15 minutes per acre density or whatever. But, uh, a 4B that's already built has these restrictions of, they're now, um, they're now part of the affordable housing inventory for what, 30 years, I think, is that right? So I don't understand how that could be. Wouldn't that be, be qualified for 3A? No, that's, that's not the guidance, so all things they can do is try and get credit for the housing that you've already built in terms of offsetting the total capacity.
So we continue through, what do we have? We've got four out of seven parcels?
So this one is currently not built, it could support 78 units. It is on Framingham Water and Sewer, so it has that advantage. It's also, as I'm sure Frank will say, very close to the station. Um, so this would be a site that you very likely see involvement of 78 units or some, some number of units. Uh, and that is up here, uh, this story.
I don't think it's on Framingham Water, I think it has it in front of it.
No, no, it is. But it's on a very small old, I, the wooden heads, all 78 units.
What's that little red hydrant that's off to the side? I don't think there's a service off that.
No, the, three or four properties there are around Framingham.
Yeah, the other one is, uh, the, the EA, so that one's, that one's on the Framingham. I don't think that one's red.
That property just to the right is a cell phone tower, there's no water. The one beyond it is me, and I have wealth.
But, but 36?
There's no, uh, well, the house itself on 36, I don't know.
Yeah, single family house.
Yeah, it is. Only 20 of those acres are in Sherburne. There are more acres, some of it's in Framingham, some of it's in me.
Um, number on this one?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's still the same, it's that that's shortest distance, uh, 1.7 miles to West Nady, and about a mile to, uh, to all services. Which would be the Rose Brothers.
How far?
Excuse me?
About a mile.
I think it's more than that. I wouldn't walk it. And I walk a mile easily.
Yes, sir.
And the, uh, MWRTA already has a shuttle bus that goes right across the street with the condos up. So there's already some sort of buses there.
Great. Okay. Okay, last two. So these ones, um, might notice during the control. Um, they meet that requirement of being district of at least five acres, but the amount of land that is not constrained on it is less than five acres. So you would have to go above 15 units per acre. Not really a big deal, if you're also using a unit cap, that is why we're gonna hold that out. So that one is up here, currently has 24 units on it, and you would be giving capacity for, for 78. Uh, I, I think the numbers are the same, it's across the street, and it has a plus service, so, that's great.
Else? There was something, uh, not clear in the, uh, the one north of Kendall there, 36 Kendall. We got 70, Mark, agree? Yeah, are those the, the current status?
No, that's not the current status, that's, um, what?
What is the 70?
70 is what?
It's just a potential.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was an example of what would be, what?
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, no, not the one, it's just a.
It, it should be, this is zero, but you can imagine 78 towers.
Sorry.
Right.
Yeah. Sunshine.
No, across the street.
Yeah.
Okay. The last one. Last one is, uh, 59 North Main Street Villages, which is here. Um, and this has, uh, 12 units on it, and it has the same condition as the previous one where it is five acres, but some of it can't be developed. And so, uh, you know, it's certainly about 15 units per acre, nor does it have the capacity of 78 units. And, uh, you wanna give the numbers, Frank?
Yeah, this is, those are sort of halves to Sherwood, and halves at Sherwood.
Okay.
Probably about a half a mile.
Great, so that's all the options, um. How are we doing?
Fine. That's one question made before, arrow down the options.
Yeah.
Do you look at 41 North Main?
41 North Main, um.
Yeah.
That is one of the original.
Is that?
The story.
Now, just to clarify, how were these, how were these options chosen?
Into our district, which is, that'll get, it's a, it's a, it's a direct decision. And, uh, that pitfall, and if we were looking at parcels where you could potentially use that 78-unit cap in order, whereas there, um, there weren't any parcels that, uh, 41 is one of five.
But that was a specific request from the story, it's not 41 North Main.
Question who?
The historic district commission.
Not using. Okay.
I have a question. Have any of the owners of these properties actually volunteered? Has anyone stepped forward and said, me, me, pick me?
Uh, yes, actually, um, Kendall.
Really?
The Gagan Trust said that they would not propose.
That's 36?
Uh, 36.
They did?
Yes, they did.
I was one, I was wondering about.
Yeah, no, they've been well informed with this, and they actually reached out, said that they would be okay. Now, there are, I think, nine people on that trust, I can't say all nine agree with that, but I was told the majority did.
Okay.
So, we have 20 minutes left, um, I think we could do countless questions, and then what I propose is we go through the seven again, do approval voting. So anyone who thinks that they could live with it being on that site raises their hand. So you can vote for as many as you think would be appropriate. At the end, we'll have maybe a winner or a smaller selection to, to move forward with. And then we could also, if we have time, talk about other sites, yeah, these seven.
Yeah, do we, uh, any of these parcels, are any of them, um, disqualified because of current existing zoning?
So, one of the things we have to do is, probably, is only inventory, is something that would prevent, um, developing on it. So if there is something, then speak.
So, I mean, despite understanding EA, they think it's already currently zoned EA, we could not apply an overlay multifamily zoning too?
Or, or I think 4B, I think Rob's point was well taken, you can't just say we're gonna tear down a 4D housing.
Yeah.
That's never legal. So I would take all 4Bs out, and I think you're probably right, anything that has been deeded in, in EA zone, well, for example, well, Leland Farms is not there, but Leland Farms has been deeded, uh, for.
4B projects do not necessarily get zoned that, that's different. 4B is a project, and it gets developed as such potentially, but that's not a zoning.
Right, but you can't tear them down.
It's a legal, uh.
It's a lea- it's a binding legal agreement.
You'd have to look at the lease. Now, Leland Farms gets disqualified because it's on town land, the town has it. It's not because it's portable, it's because it's town land.
But I think Rob's point is absolutely right, that, uh, the Fields at Sherburne has got, whatever it is, eight affordable homes that are, I, I believe it's not 30 years, I think it's 20.
Right, but maybe the, depending on the land volume, it might be part of the land still gets, maybe those eight are still left. I don't know, like, I, I.
But they're spread throughout the.
I think that's where we look at each of the different ones.
Right.
I just don't think it's gonna be legal to tear down a 4D.
But is it technically possible to expand on that parcel?
And, and maybe we don't even wanna try, maybe this parcel, we say, this parcel's easier to go with because it doesn't have these technicalities. You know, that's one thing too, is we know that we might be able to do this, but it's gonna take some work to go through it.
The, the other thing I would like to just say before we close is that, um, you know, there's a, there's kind of a spectrum of properties that we can change the zoning on. On one side, we do what the state is asking us to do, which is to find some places for multifamily housing. That's what the state wants. And on one side of the spectrum, we can do what the state wants. On the other extreme, we can pick the least developable property, um, and maybe slide it through the state, or not, I don't know. But those are the two extremes, right? I, I think everybody knows what I think. I wanna see us zone land that could actually build multifamily housing appropriately, that can relieve some of this demand. That's what our government, our state government's trying to do. I recognize there are a number of people in this room who disagree with me on that, but I felt like it had to be said before we start voting.
There are two questions, uh, from the Zoom audience, if I can just ask a little bit, just read them. First question is, what is the plan for how water and sewer would be provided on each of these parcels? For example, is it possible to connect Kendall, uh, Barca to Framingham public water and sewer?
I think the answer to that is, again, it goes back to, this is zoning, this is not development, this is potentially, with everything going on in our community and adjacent communities with water, and who knows where we're going to get with PFAS and everything else, or potentially maybe infrastructure. We don't have to build that infrastructure to zone, zoning does not require us to set it up necessarily to build the infrastructure, that's a separate issue.
A second, I have a second question from, uh, our Zoom audience, and that is, Cooley Street has not been started yet. Could it be 4B, says lit and rezoned, uh, to meet MBTA zoning goals?
You had Coolish?
Yeah, if that's possible. You can do that. On the back?
I'd like to have more information about these properties in terms of, it was very helpful for me to hear, having been brought up in this town, born and brought up here. When it's a private parcel like Kendall, to know that the Gagan Trust has approved makes a big difference for me personally, I have to say. And then, when you're talking about existing infrastructure where there are condos and a condo association, in my mind, that's a conundrum. Or maybe I'm missing something, but wouldn't everybody in the condo commi- association have to agree to this? I mean, we.
Majority of the condo people.
That's on the extreme of it'll never get developed. That's what that would.
So, so for me personally, that would make a huge difference, to know how the people, if, if it's an, if people own the property, if they're living on the property, what are their views? I don't feel like I can vote unless I have a sense of that.
On, on top of that, so while you want us to vote today, how's the final decision made? It's not made in this room, is it going to the town for vote? Is it the planning board that decides, or?
I mean, the planning board will have to ultimately put forth the document, we're taking everyone's feedback, we've used some, we've been, um, we've, we've received some technical assistance to help us identify what qualifies, and this is what our job is tonight to, you know, have this engagement and kind of have a wider group of just our planning board to look at this and say, okay, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense? And, yeah, as, um, Heidi did say, the parcel on Kendall has been something that, um.
But, but will it go to the town for vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
The, the pilot's is just a preliminary.
So, I was just about, what's the proposal that might go to the town meeting?
Uh, Eric?
Just, um, I think myself included on here is a little, little concern that this shirking is gonna have some permanence to it, you know what I mean, it's gonna be like a final decision on something we're seeing now, and just kind of voting on, on an overhead projector. You might wanna consider, I think Planning Board's done it before, these like monkey polls, like certain polls, where everyone's given like a certain number, and you can't vote twice and stuff like that. Where you can sit here, you can actually put this presentation material online, give like the town as a whole two weeks to vote, and they kind of, they can vet it out, they can ask questions. The question's about ownership or whatever, and people like it, um, and stuff like that. That's something that you might wanna consider, and we can all talk now, which I think is healthy and great, and we're all gonna talk to our neighbors and friends and spread the word or whatever else. But I think there's some concern about the finality, where I'm all gonna raise our hand, and it's gonna be.
I, I would not even use the term vote, I mean, people can raise their hands, but, you know, this is, in no sense are we taking a binding vote of this audience here tonight. This is, you know, this is the Planning Board's responsibility, prevent, present something to town meeting. And this is like any other warrant article. We will have as many public hearings as we can to schedule, to, to listen to everybody's who supports it and everybody who complains about it, um, but in the end, it will rest with the board.
The only subtle distinction is we really kind of have to have, that the parcels selected are part of the bylaw. So, we have to have that identified by December. We can't go into advisory hearings and all of that, we, we, they, at that point, discussion could be had on maybe a tweak of language potentially, but as far as what land, that would need to be decided by December.
One quick question, uh, I was, uh, taken aback that everything that was selected.
One quick question. I was taken aback that everything that was selected already has one or many properties. Open space, did you consider either town owned or privately owned? Okay, how about private, private open space by acre?
Well, that's. Open space would be conservation or town.
Undeveloped land.
Oh, undeveloped land.
I'm sorry, undeveloped land.
Do you have any specific parcels? We're happy to hear other alternatives.
I could, I'll study and map and come back to you, but I'm here the planning board. I'm just wondering.
I've volunteered one oh eight Coolidge Street as a choice here.
There must be plenty of five acre.
Yeah, that's five acres. And it's surrounded by multi, or proposed multifamily development already.
Great. That question on the back there.
I just want to be clear on this. The approval that you get from the state and from the housing thing that comes before, this comes before town meeting? It doesn't go afterwards for approval, but it doesn't?
No, it will still, the AGO, the attorney generals will still have to vet.
So that's how before the December.
But they are willing to do a preview. And that's where they will look at this before we get to town meeting. They'll want to give us a preview on our language. EOHLC, we'd like also to get before.
Well, I have to say I agree with you.
And then the only other thing that's come up is I know when we did have our address rehearsal in February, there had been some interest with some residents for having their land be potentially a multifamily zone parcel. And just because this, we have kind of, that's still in the realm of possibility if there was a particular property and it had town support, we could use other look, we have zoning available within our town to look at something like that. That wouldn't necessarily have to be a three A compliant. So it wouldn't necessarily have to allow up to seventy-eight units to be a different type of multifamily zoning allowed if there was interest as a town for some parcels. So we have a requirement to meet the three A, we have a mandate to meet the three A requirement. And in such a way that will pass a town meeting. As a community, as we were looking at housing and its needs, if there are situations that we like to consider for multifamily, that's a discussion that we can still have as a community with our own local zoning and going to town meeting separately of meeting three A and meeting the seventy-eight units for a five acre parcel. So. Andrew has a question from Zoom. Are you able to, yes, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Andrew Sylvia, three Elliott Street. I had a, just kind of a comment or a concern about how the properties were selected. Months ago, when the first plan came forward, it was kind of a center of town plan. It seemed as though there was a motive behind where it was going to go in terms of a developing that area or at least having a plan for that, you know, center of town area. When that came forward, my property abuts it. And so interest of full disclosure, when I saw that, I see it as a benefit to the property owners. And I wanted to be included in it if it was going into that area. Whether I'm in it or not, I don't care. I say that just so everyone knows kind of my thoughts, where it all went. Then now it seems as though that that center of town plan is gone, and now we're looking at different properties around town, which is also fine if that's what town wants to do. But there doesn't seem to be a plan or reason behind it other than compliance. Like there's no kind of big picture to these selections. And they're being selected simply based on properties that have already been developed or might have a plan to be developed. But there's no, there's no input from other people that haven't put forward a plan yet or might have an interest and perhaps may have better properties to be included in this plan. And now we're being told, these are the seven, let's vote on it, let's, let's make decisions. It seems kind of jumped into these properties simply based on what has been done to these properties instead of let's have an open discussion of what other ones might be wanted to be included or where or have an overall objective. These ones just kind of seem, I think oddly selected for the purpose of what people were going for. And I think maybe some more open involvement in terms of property owners out there that want to be included. And maybe those should be properties we're also considering.
So I think some of it came to the information that we learned in the planning board and we started to understand the technical questions that we were running into with what was allowed, what was not allowed with three A zoning. And the, and the idea of what do you have to, you know, what's required and it's that fifteen units per acre up to seventy-eight units can only be applied if you only choose one, if we do all of our requirements for three A on one parcel. If we split it out over other parcels, then we cannot use that seventy-eight unit cap, which, you know, we are also trying to make sure that, I think there is a bigger discussion. It was really, we were, it was a great discussion at the planning board level when we had members in the community who were interested in actually including their parcels for multifamily development. And we had the discussion on how does multifamily development options benefit our town? And I think there are a lot of benefits out there. What we learned as we dug into the technical issues of how the three A MBTA community bylaw is written, there, we may not have the controls over, we lose all control essentially that we kind of would want to shape maybe our, especially in the historic, when there's questions of the historic district and not, and wanting to ensure that those don't get just torn down. And those were, that's where I think the question would be, as a community, we might want to expand how, where we allow multifamily, but it's not under the same bylaw as multifamily for three A. Three A is, the state got a different set of mandates. We do have to comply in order to ensure that we're, you know, as a community in compliance. And so that's where parcels then we were looking at, okay, where are parcels that it would be potentially just a single parcel potentially could satisfy the requirement? And that's why we've got narrowed down to seven. And we're kind of looking at where it's already people in, as a community might be comfortable with that density already in order to satisfy three A again. It's, there's kind of, I do, you know, with an awesome discussion that we had in February about gee, you know, it could be great for preserving some of these historic buildings potentially if the barn could be converted as an accessory dwelling or if there's ways to encourage more affordable, you know, housing in our town center. We've talked about that as a, in our master plan and we've talked about it as a community for a long time. Finding ways to make that happen is still on the table. It's something we need to continue to work towards. And I think there's a desire to work towards. But unfortunately, the way three A is being applied, it would potentially not, it might not work in our town center is what we were discovering with, based on the technicalities of it. And so that's why we've got these seven parcels identified. And I think there may be a chance to look at those, these parcels for more pros and cons. Again, we are going through this. We'll be working on it over the summer. I think hopefully we can get more information out there and as a wider community present these parcels, of course, it's, you know, trying to, we don't want to also start completely from scratch and say scrap everything and start kind of grabbing big parcels because we're in that chain challenge. I mean, forty B's already kind of do that where they're in the middle of something. I know some of these parcels are kind of in the middle of something, but they're, it's okay to have parcels that have development on them already. Because again, it's zoning, it's about the zoning and what's allowed on a parcel of land, not what you can build necessarily. You have, except with the exception of the flood plains and things where there's absolutely, it could never be built in the future because of those constraints. So I.
Okay.
Nancy, do you want to have a question for Nels?
I, yes, I had finished what I was asking before. You've been studying this and studying this and you've given us a lot of information tonight. I agree. I would be uncomfortable. I would want more information before I voted for any of this because I just think it's too important. I think it's kind of folly to, to just do that as an exercise. I like the suggestion of the overall town do more monkey thing or whatever, where you get a broader sense of people when they have the information where they can digest it more than we've had the opportunity to do here. So I would ask you not to ask us to vote.
I agree with Nancy, Judy Rothschild, sixty-three Lake Street, a hundred percent. I want to do due diligence. It is very important. It's very important for me to know that property owners have agreed. It's very important for me to know, not just being said out loud, for the practicalities of this, that people do have a reasonable way of getting to an MBTA train station. And that's number one in my mind. I get the groceries and the restaurants and all of that. But in my mind, that is, that's the whole purpose of this, right? Is to provide reasonable transportation for, for people. So I would like to have these slides posted. I would like additional information, especially about if there are condos on there, does the condo association agree with this or not? Or has there been a vote or not? That matters a lot to me.
Nels, could you just address how that even works to have zoning over something that's already built?
Yeah, so we've done this in other communities where there's existing land uses. They could be multifamily, they could be industrial. That's not, whether or not a pro forma parcel is out is not one of the criteria for compliance.
But it is for me. All right. It may not be in this, but for me personally, it is a factor in how I would vote.
The state doesn't care whether people can walk to the, to. We just have to zone it, you know? If they can't walk, there's sort of a state problem. We just want to zone it in a place where they can't get there.
I have a question about this Kendall property. It's listed, it's listed as twenty-one point nine six acres. Now, we need five acres. Would you do just five acres of it? Ten? Would you do the whole piece or would you just zone five acres of it? It's a twenty acre piece.
You can't zone just part of the parcel. You have to zone the whole thing. And it has to be fifteen units per acre. So that's hundreds of units. However, if you do a single parcel, you can do a cap. So you can say, in this district, which is twenty-one acres of one parcel, you can build seventy-eight units. Yeah, you want to say something?
Yes, I just want to clarify. If you zone an area and an owner isn't interested in utilizing that zoning, we would be compliant and then nothing happens for as long as that's their disposition. So it's kind of moot. Is that, is that correct?
Right.
And then if there's a change in ownership or a change in composition of the trust or change in the composition of the condos, the change is at disposition where they might favor doing it, then the zoning is something that they could base a decision to build.
Perfect.
Why would the attorney general approve that? Or whoever's going to vet this? Why would they, why would they say it's okay if the property owner says, no way? That makes no sense to me.
It's a zoning, it's a zoning, we're not saying you have to build here. You've got to find seventy-eight acres in town to put a building.
Well, why can't they, right, let's say the, let's say the Gagins, let's say they have ten acres. Why can't they keep five themselves and have five zoned for multifamily?
He couldn't A and R. He might have to be able to A and R.
Yeah. You know, what's the best.
They'd have to do the A and R process. They'd have to go through that.
What is that?
It's just basically subdivided property approval, not required as long as it meets the basic.
Well.
With lots of signs, they could do.
I mean, that would be quite a private property owner to, to just create five acre parcels and then ask for it to be submitted to be potential for three A zoning. And you're also then, you won't be able to limit it to, I guess you could, it would buy, actually hence the question. So because we are only required to produce seventy-eight units, but if we had two five acre parcels separate in separate parts of our town, we could get a lot more than seventy-eight units. You can't limit it. Soon as we live, as soon as you go beyond one and one person, and also you can have a hundred and twenty and you could have, you could have a whole lot more than seventy-eight units.
We have a pen here and then a new pen in the back.
Thank you. I would like someone to explain to me how, other than at the Coolidge Kendall Steam, close to that intersection, how some property away from that is going to be able to get adequate water and adequate sewage for any of those properties that aren't in that corner.
That's not the, that's not three A's problem, if you will. Zoning for three A does not require any addressing of the infrastructure.
But I think that we should because what good does it do to say, okay, this is the piece of property and they can't get enough water, they can't dispose enough sewage. It's unbuiltable for those reasons. So why consider them?
Because it's zoning for the future. It's zoning for not just what's right now. We don't know in five years what's going to happen or ten years what's going to happen. It's, the state is asking communities to put forth the zoning. If we wanted to, if we were trying to evaluate every parcel for exactly, you know, septic and sewer, you know, septic and well capacity, we'd have to do the engineering on all of those parcels. That's not feasible or practical.
I feel that it is very practical because there ain't nowhere other than in the Coolidge Kendall Steam intersection area where we've got a prayer of getting enough water and enough sewage, period. So it isn't practical. So we might as well not consider them. Doesn't do any good to fit his requirements if it can't be built, right? Am I right?
It's a reasonable point of view. It's a reasonable point of view.
It's all too logical.
This is sort of related to the question prior.
Can we have one conversation, please?
If a private property owner decided to accept having this overlay on their property, does that obligate them in any way? Or open them up to forced development or anything else? It's just up to that private property or just accepting this on their property doesn't, they're not, they're not agreeing to some future.
If you own the property, whoever owns that property, it's their property to do what they wish to with their property. The zoning affords them another option of what to do with that property.
Private, but it doesn't.
It does not require them to.
Domain or any of these other things because of the zones.
It does in our, you know, we have a business general district in the area that's zoned for business. It's zoned for business. It does not say that you will have, you know, you have to build, you know, another restaurant there. I mean, we know the infrastructure, the water and the septic is not exactly suitable for the, you know, to have five restaurants, as much as we all think we'd like to. It just doesn't, the infrastructure is not there. But it's zoned to allow that to happen.
This could be a benefit for a homeowner without any real downside unless they decide to change their mind or the trust decides we're okay with development. It's ultimately up to the private property owner what happens going forward.
So here's the zoning hurdles, but the technical challenges should be considered as well is what I'm hearing.
Was there another question before we come back?
Yeah, given that it's five after eight, I do, I think maybe, you know, we can, we'll do one more question and then I'd like for Nels to be able to kind of wrap up kind of some of the intent, interest. I think it sounds like we are not going to. I think it sounds like we are not going to, I don't know, I, my sense of the audience is, we're, I don't know if we're really settled, maybe we can narrow it down to, you know, at least rule out, I don't know if we can rule out anything tonight, but I'd like to maybe work towards some progress with the idea that we will have to come back and have another meeting to discuss this first and find a way to, again, engage the community on this. So it's a good topic as we, over the summer, as we kind of start trying to get our parcels identified or parcel, which we, again, learned from the technical language and the substance of understanding how it's written, why we might want to consider one parcel versus multiple. Bob, do you have one?
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on Robert, what Robinson. I, I completely agree. And that's the point I was trying to, probably wasn't articulate enough, trying to make earlier, which is, I'd like to see us as a community. Whatever we choose, choose it in a place where it can be built. And yeah, no, I couldn't agree more with you both. But, and to me, that forces us into the North Sherman Water and Sewer District. If, if and when it happens, and it's, it looks like it may well happen. You know, none of us really know. But I would like to see this board narrow it down to properties in that area because they can be built. They may, you know, it may not happen, but at least we tried, right? And frankly, we've already, as a community, chosen that neighborhood as a multifamily neighborhood. We, we chose it, we voted at town meeting to do that. And, you know, so I think we should stay with that. I mean, of what you've proposed, I personally would favor 36 Kendall for that reason, right? It's in that zone. But I think, I'd like to see the planning board go back and look at all the problems in that district, but focus on that district because it's real. Thank you.
Okay, so we've heard you. We're not going to go vote on each parcel, but maybe there are some questions that we could get polling on. So who is in favor of putting 3A on existing planned water and sewer as a priority?
Water and sewer, yeah.
North Sherman.
Is that one, tell quickly?
The town?
The majority.
Majority, yeah. Okay, so most people want to, who is in favor of using a single parcel with a cap as a way of focusing? Also, okay. So I think with those, we can at least narrow somewhat down within the community and more effort can be made to reaching out to property owners potentially that fit those two criteria. Yes?
That's a technical question, of course. The last version of the act that I have is August 17th, 2023. Is that the latest? I know it's been a moving target, so.
Yeah, I believe so.
If so, it says in here, and I've been confused most of the time because of this, that in adjacent small towns, there is no minimum land area. In these communities, the multifamily zoning district may comprise as many or as few acres as the community determines is appropriate.
That's, that's correct. But they also say the smallest district size has to be five acres. So by, by default, it's five acres because you can't have a district smaller than five acres.
They say five contiguous acres.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nice question about that vote. You just said that narrowed it down. So does that mean if you have a poll, all those properties we just saw are not going to be on it? You just narrowed down not properties that will appear in the poll?
Well.
I urge that not to.
Yeah, we're going to take out things like, I don't know, I guess, and, um, the fields.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with the 20 people in this room narrowing that down for the 4,000 people to vote. I know you want to accomplish something, I know you want to do that. But we had a narrow majority right there, so five people make a difference. I don't, I think everyone's property should appear in a poll if it goes before the entire town.
And, and additional problems?
Well, Marion, I'm thinking of actually having an agenda item to see if 41 North Main, if the select board recommends the planning board, 41 North Main. That's great that historic doesn't want to happen, but it's facing a 40B, which will destroy the historic nature of it anyway. So I think that, you know, I think sometimes, again, that's just a couple of people making the big decision for a while.
Oh, I totally agree with you.
I know probably more than should.
I totally agree with you. I'm, I'm just not comfortable with, with focusing on the properties that were presented here. We should expand the view of it.
Well, I do think maybe we engage with the planning votes. I don't want, they did a lot of work to narrow this, and I don't want to throw that out. You know what I mean? Maybe find out more about their process and how they narrowed it, you know what I mean? But I, like, 41's like a big one, you know? Because there's a very good chance if it's not business, this might provide a reasonable alternative for that home, for that landowner over a 40B. The 40B would be just destructive to historic nature. So have like whatever handful of people on historic commission say, we don't like this and all this stuff. It's not, you don't have a choice there. And even this vote we just had, I just, you know, I just think at least the, how many properties? There's sevens, whatever you said. I think those seven should, at least those seven should go before a poll, before the town's votes. And again, I know you want to accomplish something and I appreciate that, but we just had a majority of what, like, three people made this swing vote there. If you count, I mean, you can raise your hands above the water, you know what I mean?
I'm all for opening this up to some community engagement. I think it's hard, I mean, you heard tonight, there's a lot of nuances. And so trying to, you know, putting a poll out there, I think, okay, we can, we can have it, I think we need to have a discussion. Clearly, tonight's not going to solve or we're not going to move forward necessarily after tonight's discussion. I guess the question is, is identifying those parcels? And then when you open it up to the wider community, are we, will that, well, you know, a poll or vote on parcels that maybe with select board and open face? And rural, not, Land Opposition Committee and, and maybe there's a couple other that we can continue to, to identify some parcels. And then you put forth a poll, will that help us narrow from there? Or will we then keep, I don't want to be in a situation where we keep saying, well, what about those parcels? I mean, never, we can't move forward. We are on a tight deadline to get to, get the bylaw language done in time so that we can send it in for review with the two different state agencies that we need to pass muster, aside from also then being ready for our town meeting preparation, which is January, February, you know, January.
I don't want to get any, I don't want to get any nut, my number is done, because I think it's great to narrow to seven. I don't want this group to narrow down beyond that seven. Because that's my number one thing. You know, I, I understand you want to accomplish something, but we have, we literally had a majority of three people were swayed in that last vote. And then too many things happen like that. Second thing is there are reasons that someone privileged that, you know, we're in negotiations with 41 North Main, whatever. And that one is different. That is the town center, that's the crux. And at least I think should be on the table to at least look at. And I want to at least have our board, which, I know it's not the board to put this floor, but have our board at least look at that because it's too important. It's not some, it's not a willy-nilly, you know what I mean? It's a very important pivotal thing that defines the town center as a whole and which is currently, you know, planning a 40B as opposed to 40B in this current location. And I think it just, we'll talk about it maybe more at a meeting, you know what I mean? And as I just hate to, especially when you said like, you know, one committee came to you and said, keep it off, and now it's off. You see, that's a very important decision.
Because the other challenge though is, is that it'd be, the 78 unit ability to cap only applies if you pick one parcel. And, you know, we have had some interest, the Gagan family has expressed it to be part of the community and their one single acre, I mean, their one single parcel as we brought up could be a compliant. However, we're not making that decision tonight. We will provide, I'm not sure if it's a monkey doodle, whatever it is, we'll figure out what poll, some way to get a little bit wider audience participation. As far as, again, just looking at that map, the gray areas are excluded because of being town owned or, I guess you could kind of walk through real quick again what the constraints are. If we're looking at parcels to identify, what we, what are our pitfalls? Or what do we need to make sure we are aware of because what automatically excludes something?
Yeah, yeah, so all the gray areas have law constraints. And somebody can count towards capacity, whether it's wetlands or water body or public land.
Do you have, you don't have this in the slide, do you? It's not.
No, it's kind of hard to see, but kind of as a big, like, as a, as a mural type board. We also posted, we can post this online as a video. Zoom in and look at the different parcels. But yeah, there's all the constraint. Floodplains also.
Is there anything more you could say about how those constraints led to these seven? And, you know, are there eight others that were feasible, but, you know, just thought, eh, you know, people aren't going to like those? Or was it really once you imposed the constraints, it sort of points at the seven?
There are certainly others that could be considered, um, compliant in the back.
Yes, two things. Is all of this information going to be available online? That map, for example, the seven parcels.
Your, your slide.
The slide presentation.
Yeah, the whole, the whole presentation?
Yes, and then we'll get a screen recording as well.
And I would like to say that I can't tell you, despite being against every single one of those proposals for 41 North Main that has come before the town, none of them have gotten anywhere. So I think that's just a really good reminder for people to have as they consider adding that into the possibility.
I guess I'd like to point something out, which is that the planning board did come up with a proposal that we were working on. And we proposed, you know, this thing is all, this is taking a step back and taking a bigger look at things. But we proposed zoning the 36 Kendall parcel as a, as a multifamily. And we sort of felt that was a good faith attempt to comply with the spirit of the state law. Not an attempt to propose a economically undeveloped parcel to get around the law. And then we kind of like threw in this town center stuff. It's like, well, you know, it'd be nice to have some multifamily in the town center. And we looked at also mandatory mixed use, which is typically a store or offices or something on the first floor and then residences above. And you can count that, like, some percentage of the requirement, but not the entire, 25% of the requirement, something like that. And it's just, the whole town center thing turned into a big can of worms. You know, the historic, the wellheads, the this, the that. And I'm, you know, I don't know, my, my feeling at this point is that like, you know, I still like the Kendall parcel. If something like what Erica suggested is a good alternative, we'll certainly look at that. If there's another one on this list that looks like a good alternative, we'll happily look at that. If there's something that nobody's thought of, great, we'll consider them all. But I, I guess I do sort of feel that we, we identified a, like I said, a good faith attempt to comply with the spirit of the law. And I just kind of see that as something we should be doing.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, it sounds like the consensus is to position the 3A district where there's resources. And, but do the residents in that area feel that everything's kind of being pushed into that area? So that's another question that needs to be looked at.
So I guess, Nels, would you, would you do anything that, I really appreciate you being involved and learned a lot, more to learn. I really am grateful to everyone coming out tonight. I believe that at the planning board meeting, we can motion to adjourn because we have lots of facts and I hope you'll take food on your way out. So I may have a motion to adjourn for this evening. With discussion, we will look to the town website and we will try to send out information. This discussion will be continued. We will try and figure out some way to continue to share information and take everyone's feedback from tonight on how best to move to the next stage. So if I can have a motion to adjourn for tonight. Okay, all in favor of adjuring, planning board? Thank you, everyone.